Review of the applications and how they work together. Intensive agriculture means any agriculture use requiring an industrial wastewater permit from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Intensive agriculture uses shall be allowed only in Agriculture 2 through Agriculture 5, land use classifications inclusive, and shall first obtain a special exception from the county. I chose to implement that through special use permit, but that's not. However, existing intensive agriculture uses as of the date of adoption of this policy, and that was January 1994 was the land development code. Will not be required to obtain a special exception approval from the county for those existing intensive agriculture uses. However, expansion or change of existing intensive agriculture uses after the date of adoption of this policy, for which an industrial wastewater permit is required from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for that expansion or change, will require a special exception from the county unless the expansion or change is required by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to maintain the same livestock population of the activity as existed on the date of adoption of this policy. So. When, and all of the parcels that are included in staff's report were parcels that were submitted by the applicant to include in this application. I did not go out and mine, North Florida Volstein parcels from the property appraisal database, these were included for our consideration with this application. And Piedmont Track parcels are included in the applicant's FDIP industrial wastewater permit. The applicant submitted this nutrient management plan engineering report in support of permit renewal, prepared by Michael Holloway, P.E., for North Florida Volsteins as part, in November of 2010, as part of their application for their latest wastewater permit. And on page nine of that application, it states, "Under the expansion plans of this facility, additional spray field will have to be added on the Piedmont Track before additional cows can be added." That's why the Piedmont Track is in their industrial wastewater permit, because they wanted the number of cows that they were applying for, and they needed additional land to do spray field activities. And that could have been accommodated in a variety of ways, Mr. Bennett said, but it was, it was accommodated by the Piedmont Track, which was included in their industrial wastewater permit. So that is what led me to the conclusion and the opinion that this, what is occurring on the Piedmont Track is part of an intensive agricultural use and an intensive agricultural operation, because it's not just the animals, or the housing of the animals, or the pasturing of the animals, it's, it's everything that's associated with the particular use. And in this case, DEPs found it appropriate to include it in their wastewater permit. And, and that's what led to the interpretation that that was included. I'd like to also address some of the uses that would be allowed in silviculture agriculture, either by right or by special use permit, because I don't think that it's quite as intensive as, as was portrayed. Section 2.04, silviculture agriculture, the uses that are permitted without special use permit are silviculture activities, limited agriculture, including the grading, grazing of livestock on pasture lands in conformity with the limitations in policy I.2.2.2 of the comprehensive plan. And row crops planted on a rotational basis between the harvesting of timber and planting of trees as part of silviculture activities, in conformity with also policy I.2.2.2. Single-family homes are allowed, and also structures commonly associated with crops, pasture, hunting or silviculture activities such as barns, outbuildings, sheds, vehicle storage, small mill operations, which you might expect with silviculture operations to process some lumber or some trees on site, small office structures, and each structure is counted as a development unit. Processing, storage, or sale of agricultural products on these race long premises. And then by special use permit is the archery rifle shotgun pistol range, hunting and fishing camps, and telecommunications parks. So those uses would have to come through the exact same process as this, but also prohibited uses intensive agriculture requiring a wastewater management permit from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. So this is sort of an issue on which we fundamentally disagree with what is allowed in this particular category. And I was looking. Okay. I think. I think that that is what I had to say, and I don't know if I answered your question that you had.
I think you did.
Okay. Have you had to answer any questions that you might have now at this point? Or have you delivered?
Yes, Mr. Bennett. Your touch of mind was that there were ways of doing what you're doing without going through this process. That is, under leasing it to someone and doing what you're doing now without going through the DEPs going through us. Is that what you're saying?
It would be questionable if, if we could lease that property. It still has our name on it. We could sell it to someone and they could do it, or we could, someone else could lease property someplace else. For us to say, and, and, you know, that's really circumventing the, our whole intent here, we're, we're trying to be up and up on this, that, that, there are all kinds of games we could play, we're just trying to lay everything on the table, know what we're doing, and keep control of it so we can maintain our October. We totally agree with these folks that are complaining about the level of the river. We, we want that water at that level too, and we're going to do our damnedest to keep it that way.
Let me ask you a question real quick. Of course, I just disappeared. We're sitting up here basing our decision on facts, right?
That's correct. Natural competent evidence. More by what they call a preponderance of the evidence, which means it is more likely than not.
I have a couple of questions before Mr. Beecham goes, and I'll propose them to either one, as long as somebody can come up with a fact, something I look at. If you'll go back to Mr. Bennett's outlay of the Piedmont Track, if anybody else. Can you pull out from slide number? Okay, I'm reading from I.2.2.2, and it says, "Within the silviculture agriculture land use classification, intensive agriculture uses shall be prohibited." We all agree on that.
Agreed.
Okay. So where on that map? Does it go from five to six? Because nothing shows me on that map where it goes from five to six. It's one contiguous piece. Some of it's five, some of it's six. There. So somewhere in there.
Is there a breakdown on how many?
We.
Yes, sir.
Two hundred and six hundred.
I would have copies. You want me to boost my copy?
Two hundred and eighty is in A5, and six hundred and twenty is in A6.
Okay. All right, so we can, we can find it. Let's move on. Grazing of livestock on pasture land shall be allowed, and row crops planted on a rotational basis between the harvesting of timber and planting of trees as part of silviculture activities shall be, shall also be allowed. Okay, that's on whatever portion is A6. Row crop activities shall be limited to areas containing soils within hydrological groups A and B as identified in the Soil Survey of County U.S. Soil Conservation Service, September 1992, and shall maintain a 50-foot natural buffer around our wetlands. In addition, yada, yada, yada. Where, okay? We're now growing silviculture, we're on the six side. You know, we, we know we can grow grass on the five side. Okay. On the six side, where are the A and B soils? Nobody showed me that.
Okay, now we're.
I'm not worried about growing grass on five, everybody can grow grass on five.
We have not taken the silviculture option. We are not growing row crops. There is a vegetative buffer required next to all of those.
Yeah, 50-foot natural buffer.
Well, what, what's more natural than the grass? Foreneal grass.
What I'm trying to say is, the way I interpret this, and everybody interpreted, hydrological groups A and B as identified in Soil Survey, okay? To me, I interpret this as, if you're in the six, and you've got an A or a B, you're good to go. You can grow grass, or, or ground out solids, or whatever. But if you're on a, anything other than A and B, then it's questionable as to whether it's allowed to grow, you know, grasses, or row crops, or whatever, in my interpretation most definitely. Now, you know? Please proceed. Because I'm, I want to get to the bottom, the facts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am reading from, I'm sorry, County Planner. I am reading from the Nutrient Management Plan slash Engineering Report in Support of Permit Renewal Prepared for North Florida Volsteins, prepared by Michael Holloway, P.E., November 2010. And this is page two. Soils information. The Piedmont Track is located 1 mile or so to the east, but is on the Wacasasa Flats. The Piedmont site contains six different soil types. All of the wetland areas are listed as Lynnhaven and Allentown mucky fine sands. As expected, these are hydrologic group D soils with a seasonal high water table above the ground surface. The majority of the area to be used for farming are ridge wood and hurricane fine sands. These are hydrologic group C soils with a seasonal high water table 2 to 3.5 feet below the ground surface. Land application areas will also contain Liam fine sand, hydrologic group B slash D, S H W T, I'm not sure what that means, 0.5 to 1.5 feet below ground surface. Oh, seasonal high water table.
Oh, seasonal.
And Ortega fine sand, hydrologic group A, seasonal high water table 4 to 5 DGS, all of the soils in these sandy groups.
Okay, I, I agree that all of them are sand if they're above the high water level. But the, the groups A and B, you know, it says, planting of trees as part of silviculture activities shall be allowed. Row crop activities shall be limited to areas containing soils with hydrologic groups A and B as identified in Soil Survey. You just read that there are those soils out there, but nobody that I know of yet has shown me on the map where, where those soils are. I know the soil samples, I can't go out there and look at the top of the dirt, kick, you know, the vegetation off the top and say, oh, this is a black pine sand, or this is a, whatever, whatever, whatever. Okay? My point in, in this is, I don't want to set a precedent, okay? I'm quoting something that's contrary to our land development regulations, okay? So if there's a soil map, you know, that we could find, you know, that would show me a little better, on A6 part of it, you probably could do just like Mr. Bennett's to do.
That may be up right there. There's a soil map, U.S. Soil Conservation.
Madam Chair, I would like to say, quasi-procedural proceedings, is the applicant's burden to prove that they are consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Sit down, Jean. Sit down, Jean. Sit down, Jean.
Procedurally, this is extremely odd order for someone to come out of the audience and produce a document after that person has already spoken.
I agree.
Yeah, if you'll just sit down.
You got to sit down.
Yeah, just sit down. Sit down. You're going to work, he needs to go ask you more.
You're making it worse.
Now, if, if, Mr. Beecham? Mr. Beecham? Now, if Mr. Commissioner Thomas wants to see it, he can request to see that.
Okay.
And then he won't be out of order if he requests to see it.
From the beginning, when I took this position and this became an issue, and reading the silviculture and the A5 category and that sort of thing, the DEP permit, North Florida Volsteins, I knew that the, I knew that the argument would be on the, whether or not the use of 232 constitute an intensive agricultural use. And there were, there were a couple of things also, one being in the silviculture category that the comprehensive plan actually said, and I'm quoting, you can have row crops planted on a rotational basis between the harvesting of timber and the planting of trees. Well, one thing that struck me, and I didn't really see a timeframe instituted there, but on a rotational basis, that means at some point you're supposed to reestablish land and trees, and silviculture zoning categories. And in the interim, you can plant the row crops before you get ready to plant pine trees again. That was number one.
Okay.
The, the second point was, what struck me, and of course, as I preface this, what I knew would become the, the argument is that the DEP permit being for industrial wastewater permit for, you know, expanding an industrial use category specifically ran afoul of what's in the A6 zoning category that Mr. Thomas pointed out a while ago, that industrial, that intensive ag uses are disallowed there in that category, and what defines an intensive use is whether or not you apply to the DEP industrial wastewater permit. So I guess from the very beginning, I've always known, and I think it's up to the board in the final analysis to determine whether or not the use on that piece of property constitutes, in your opinion, by majority vote, an intensive agricultural use. So by the, by the DEP permit itself and the LDR, they, they run just straight into each other.
I can state the definition of LDRs.
Absolutely. By the, by the applicant's DEP permit stating that it is an intensive agricultural use, it runs right square in the face of the prohibition against an intensive agricultural use in the.
For the A6.
In the A6 zoning category. So the only.
Okay, you go.
The only countervailing argument to be made is, was the, if you did not think that was an intensive use out there, and overrode what.
Was in our LDRs.
Okay, may I reply?
Yes, sir. Just say the names of the writer.
Mr. Lang, you and I, my name is Tom, eh? We interpret it somewhat differently. If we had a rule that said, you can only catch fish in a Swanee River by hook, makes a lot of difference whether I have a period or comma there. I could have by spear, by trap, by net, gets me down to almost anything but dynamite. If you look at how this reads, lands classified as silviculture agriculture shall be lands which are predominantly used for silviculture activities conducted in accordance with silviculture policies contained when the conservation element of this comprehensive plan, comma, that's one category, comma, okay? Limited agricultural uses as described below, dwelling units, development units, archery ranges, and, and go through all the things we're allowed. That, that is just one thing. I have no intention of using the.
Mr. Bennett, if you could stand behind the podium and you speak your part, thank you.
Sorry about that. I'm hard to discipline.
Sorry.
Good thing you don't have to do it daily. The, if, and, and John, that's where you and I are reading is somewhat different. We have no intention of using the silviculture and the row crop. The silver, row crops only are allowed to be used between planting of trees. We're, that's not part, it's the rest of, we're that comma, the rest of the parts of it, where it says, there are limited agricultural uses and that kind of thing that apply to us. Row crops, we have no intention of growing row crops, and we could only grow them if we would plant trees. We're not going, we have no intention of planting trees. We're, we want to grow grass there, we want to use it for one of the purposes that it says right here, is qualify. We're not going to use a hook, we're going to use a spear or a net.
That's illegal.
So where do you say that the comma goes, Mr. Bennett?
What do I say is what?
Where did the comma go?
The comma is right beha, oh, it's where it belongs, it's, but the silviculture is one cat, one of a bunch of purposes that, that can be used for. We're not using the silviculture part of it. Anything prior to that first comma, we're not using it, we're using the other purposes that we can use it for. That doesn't.
I see what you're arguing.
You see, that doesn't apply.
I necessarily agree with that, but I see your argument.
Okay, okay, well, how.
Approve, approve, he could use either side of the company if he wanted to. Say that again, Madam Chair.
If we were to approve the special use permit as worded, he could use either side of the company if he wanted to.
Sure.
Although he said it's used behind the company, you know? I'm just trying to be fair.
I just have a hard time when it states in our LDRs that intensive agriculture means any agriculture use requiring an industrial wastewater permit, and that's, the Piedmont Track is included in this wastewater permit, is that correct?
We added it on, which is to your benefit, we're, we're, but it doesn't have to be.
But do you understand though, that the, our LDR state, do you understand what the LDR state, or land.
Yes, but there's nothing that says that this can't be part of a permit. It, it's not being, it has to be part of a permit if it's used for an industrial use purpose, it's not used for an industrial.
But it means any ag requiring an industrial wastewater permit. It doesn't, it, it's any agricultural use requirement, so it can be any ag use requiring this industrial wastewater permit from the Florida DEP is then classified as intensive ag, which is only allowed in A2 through A5. I think Mr. Commissioner Thomas was trying to explain that also a while ago.
But intensive use is concentrated animal feeding. There is no concentrated animal feeding here. If you have concentrated animal feeding, you're required to have that permit, but nothing says that you can't attach another property to that permit that doesn't have an intensive agricultural use. There's nothing in there that says that.
That says you can't attach it.
It said, it, it doesn't say you can't attach it.
But where in there doesn't say you can attach?
It doesn't say.
A6 to that. I, I'm not arguing A5.
It's saying you can't. It's saying you can't use A6 for an industrial use purpose.
Correct.
But you, but nothing says you can't attach it as part of the permit, but not use it for a concentrated animal purpose. It's totally your advantage to be that way. It gives you a lot more control, there's more control over that water than any other water in the Wacasasa Flats.
Out or around the audience?
I'm not doubting that whatsoever. No, I'm not doubting that you have monitoring well, I'm not doubting that you can tell me where the level's going, up, down, staying the same, up during high water, down during low water. I'm not saying that I'm monitoring that. What I'm saying is, I think what, your attachment to that intensive agricultural permit, that is a word, is in violation or contrary to what we have in our LDRs for the A6 portion only. That, you know, that, A5, I'm good with.
But if we, if we comply, if we comply with your zoning, what difference does it make if it's attached?
This is what the time.
If we comply, we comply with the zoning, attaching it to a permit should make no difference. It's to your advantage to have it attached.
But it states in our LDRs, and I've already read it once, I'm going to read it again, but that's what it states, in our land development regulations, in fact, that's what it states.
Yeah, I did not understand what.
Do you want to, do you want a copy of this?
I probably haven't, but thank you.
Can you have a copy of this, please? And I'll.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead. And just real quick, I'm going to tell the audience, the public, when someone makes, whether us or Mr. Bennett or Mr. Beecham, if, if any of us makes a comment that you, that you are for or against, please keep your remarks to yourself. I don't hear anybody talking or whatever after somebody makes a comment, you need to keep those to yourself. Go ahead.
You've got to assume that you're going to inform the commission when we get through here, as to their options in terms of being able to approve the United tax conditions and something.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You know, the, the concern that you should have and do have is that if you should grant this tonight, is that opening the door to intensive ag and A6 zoning, or any other zone that intensive ag should not be in? And, and the answer to that is no, if you attach the appropriate conditions. If, a strict reading perhaps of the, of the comp plan, you can easily say, okay, it's A6, therefore, nothing can happen. But a more reasonable approach for somebody that wants to grow grass rather than put in an ar, a firing range, or build cabins out there, or put houses out there, could be, okay, we're going to give you the special use permit for the main dairy, we're going to let you grow grass on the Piedmont Track, and we're putting the following conditions on you. You can't grow dairy cows, you can't have pivots, you can't do this, and you can't do that. What you can do is grow grass. And that is a reasonable approach, it's a sensible approach, it doesn't do any damage to your code, to your comp plan. I know Ms. Nidenbach is recommended denial, and she did a good job of reading the portions of the report that apply well for that position, but her recommendation is only a recommendation. You're not bound by that, you have the authority to go against her recommendation, you should do so carefully. I sat where Mr. Beecham sits now for Leaning County for many years, and I've always advised my board, you can do it, but you need to be careful with your conditions, and that's what we're asking for, some careful conditions. But all we want is to be able to grow grass on the Piedmont Track, tie it in so we can't ever do anything else out there that doesn't comply with your current zoning. Keep him away from intensive ag use with conditions. That's a reasonable approach, it gets everybody to where they want to be. Thank you.
Mr. Beecham, you just said keep him away from doing intensive, and I got there.
Mm-hmm.
That our, our LDRs, you understand what our land development.
Yes, ma'am, I think.
I was just making sure. Thank you.
Pardon? The LDR does that?
Right, that's what, that's what I was trying to say. Our LDR is set down. Mr. Lang, what's our next step?
Did you have any further questions?
No, sir.
I quit. My business, Ms. Nidenbach. I get lost in this thing sometimes, but I understand if Mr. Bennett needs the Piedmont Track, so he can keep his number up on his cap. He needs that track in his permit, that is, by the DEP permit. Is that right? That he needs that piece of property to be able to keep the number of cows, he's got to stay compliant.
Madam Chair, that their permit included this land as part of their expansion to have as many cows as they want to have on the main dairy site.
So if he wants to take this piece of property out of his permit, then he wouldn't be in compliance with his cap.
I, I'm, I'm maybe not the best person to ask that question. I assume that there's a threshold. I'm maybe not the best person to ask that question. I assume that there's a threshold.
I'm just saying, if he wants to take this piece of specialty use permit, take this piece of property out of his special use permit, he's still on the Piedmont tract, and then he can spread manure without asking anyone. Is that right?
If, well, this property is part of his industrial wastewater permit, so as long as it is part of his industrial wastewater permit, and he's conducting operations that are connected with his dairy there, then that's in violation of our-
But I'm saying, if he took it out of his industrial wastewater permit, Piedmont tract, could he come down there and spread manure without being a violation of us? Because it wouldn't be intensive ag, manure spreading of living though, and not considered intensive ag.
And I don't remember exactly when, what the date was, but it's been some time within the last, sort of, recent fifteen years period. The county commission actually put in an ordinance that regulated agricultural spreading of waste, and that, I think, only lasted maybe a year, and then you rescinded that and said that you weren't going to regulate agricultural spreading of waste. What I don't know is whether that was limited to particular land use categories, or if that was just a blanket countywide, but I think that it's been your practice not to regulate the agricultural spreading of wastes in the county.
Well, I was on this board when we did that, and it got working, it was affecting too many good people, you know, whatever. You know, it affected too much.
And so, that situation is kind of where we are, but this property was included within his industrial wastewater permit, so those activities would not be allowed in the A6 area.
That can't be allowed in A6.
That's correct.
A5.
In the silviculture agriculture. An A5 intensive agriculture is allowed with a special use permit.
A2 through A5. Any board members have any questions for anybody?
If he's in compliance, he needs to be with us in this accord as action.
Right. Yes, Madam Chair, the-
Accord as action.
The silviculture-agriculture piece, yes. And like I said before, we would be willing to change the A1 A6 to A2, and then that-
Which is the original piece there, about 129.
Yes.
Any of the board members have any questions for anyone at this time?
I have one. I think we're just assuming, Don, that you do not want to pull that property out of your industrial wastewater permit. Is that correct? I know that you expect you don't, but-
If we pull it out, we're deceiving ourselves, because we're going to sell it to someone, or we're going to do something to someone, and all need of monitoring wells and everything will go away. It's crazy. You've got way above what you're asking for. Standards that are the safest we can, it gives us information on the flats, it's, we're going to be cutting off our nose to fight our face. I mean, sure, something, I guess, will be done. We certainly want to stay in business and those kind of things, and you're asking us to leave here and play games, rather than be upfront with you of what's going on.
I know you were saying that, you know, it can be done, and I don't doubt that, because of the regulations, you know, it can be done. But what you're asking this board to do is pretty much go ahead and modify our land use plan, because if we make this exception to allow intensive, if it stays part of it, if we allow this, you know, this exception in A6, then we might as well just rewrite and take it out and go ahead and include A6 in the intensive. Now, we're setting a precedent. Okay, let's not play games. You've been in law, I haven't, okay? But you know that we're going to set a precedent that the next person, whether it's a dairy or whatever type of intensive ag, needs a water permit, okay? And that's how they classify intensive ag. I'm not saying there's not other intensive ag things that don't need a wastewater permit, and we're not here to debate that. What we're here is, our land comp plan says intensive ag is not allowed in A6.
And there is no intensive ag taking place up.
But because that piece of property is tied to the wastewater permit that you have, and an intensive ag application for that wastewater permit, technically, it is part of, or could be used, even though you say you will never do it, and we can probably write it down on a hundred pieces of paper, you know, it's still going to be part of an intensive ag use.
But there's nothing in writing that says it can't be and maintain its current zone. Nothing in writing that says that. It says that if it's used for an intensive ag purpose, it has to be part of a permit. It does not say that if you don't use it for an intensive ag purpose, that it can't be part of a permit.
Well, it does say in our LDRs, if it requires a wastewater permit, intensive ag, it means anything, any ag that requires that wastewater permit.
This does not require an intensive ag permit.
But it is in-
It is. We chose to put it in there. It was our choice.
Right, but since it's in there, Mr. Bennett, that means now, since it's in there, do you not disagree that now it fits his definition? Do you agree?
I agree that it doesn't require it being-
But it fits the definition, because it plainly says in here.
It's not being used for an intensive ag purpose.
It states it, though. If it requires an industrial waste facility permit, that means that intensive ag means anything that requires that, any ag that requires-
Nothing is being done on there that requires approval.
Then why is it included in here, in this wastewater facility?
Because we wanted to meet the very highest standards we could. I think you're encouraging people to play games if you do anything else.
I'm not encouraging anyone to play games, Mr. Bennett. I'm just going by what our LDRs state. I'm not encouraging anybody to play games.
We interpret that.
I ain't going by exactly what the LDRs state. By all means, I'm not encouraging anyone.
Well, I respect your opinion.
All right, Mr. Lang, what's our next process? Do you need to do?
Well, if you received all positive input from both the staff and from the applicant, then it's time to deliberate and come to some sort of resolution.
Liberate, that means, we start talking amongst ourselves, you know? I'm just asking, now. I'm just asking.
As a board, make a determination, by majority vote, what you want to do. There, Mr. Beecham pointed out, about two weeks ago, you can approve the special use application, you can deny the special use application, you can approve with conditions and safeguards as being fit. I think you can approve that part and the non-part. So, that's your option.
Now, I have a question.
Okay.
Do we have to make a zoning change from A1 to A2? Or should we make the zoning change from A1 to A2 on the, I don't know what y'all call it.
The original track.
The one up there.
Well, your planning director has recommended that you do that.
Before we approve or disapprove this special use permit.
Well, you can do it continuing upon, considering zoning, and I think that's what you can say.
Yes, Madam Chair, there are two ways that you can do this. There's a, you can defer your action tonight, we can process the land use amendments, and then at your August meeting, is about when that timing would work out, you would adopt the land use amendments, and then adopt the special use permit. And then you would know that you are 100% in compliance with your comprehensive plan.
For the A1 piece?
Yes, and you would know that that was done at that point. I have seen it done. I have not ever personally recommended to do it this way, but I have seen it done, that conditions are added, that says, within a certain amount of time, the applicant will make this application, and it will go to the board in this manner, and it will proceed, or the special use permit becomes void, or the special use permit comes back to you for decision. And to me, that's just a slightly messy way to do it, that, you know, requires us all kind of keeping up with it, but you could really do that in any way.
Could we take this, like, could we, like, approve that part and then not approve the Piedmont tract, but yet approve the original tract, like, the A1 and the expansion, approve that?
You could, if you just wanted to be done with the special-
But not because it's not the A6 part?
Permit tonight, you could approve the main dairy tract, the Grey John tract, and the South Pivot tract, with the condition that the applicant will proceed within a certain timeframe to change that A1 to A2, and then deny the portion for the Piedmont tract, and you can deny the Piedmont tract in total, or you can just deny the silviculture-agriculture portion of the Piedmont tract, and then the A5 portion-
Then you do it now, allow it in A5.
Yes, with the special use. So, but A6 is not. But yes, and you can move to deny that silviculture-agriculture A6 portion as part of your option.
Or, as Mr. Beecham pointed out, you can approve Piedmont tract with specific conditions.
And if you choose to go ahead and approve it with a condition for changing A1 to A2, as I go sit back down, I'm going to chart that out in terms of dates, so that we can make the condition very specific, because I want it to proceed in a very timely manner so that it gets done, and it's not something that drives on.
Mr. Dean-Lang, you, the county itself-
If you need to speak in the mic, please, so we can record this, inspect the man with the records, the way he's speaking.
Great, Beecham, for the applicant. I was asking the planner, the board itself could initiate those land use changes, could they not, the A1, A2?
They could. Yes, but not without your permission.
Okay. But, I mean, that's the track it could follow if North Florida Holstein said, "Okay, go ahead."
Well, yes, we still need you to sign the application and the affidavits and things, because we don't act on people's property without their permission.
Right, they would have to request us to change that.
Yes, ma'am.
We can't just change it unless they give us, they tell us to change it.
That's right.
We agree with them, denying the change of their request.
Yes, that's right.
Do you have any questions or any discussion, anything you need to clarify?
Would you be willing to request a zoning change for, what part is that, main dairy?
A1, A2.
Main dairy part?
Yes, sir, the main.
The A1 part of the main dairy, just A1 now, so would you be willing to make a request to change it to A2?
To the A1 to A2.
Correct.
You'll do that?
Yes.
Well, our plan just told us that we can't do it, just to do that, you need to request that change.
Okay, we request that change, and of course, we're also going to do in our special use, whether it be part of this or separate, to get it in line with current cows.
Yes, sir, and you'll need to get with the planning to change that, so you can sign, so we can go forward with that, to change the A1, A2.
Okay, and I certainly apologize for making this this traumatic, but, you know, it is how we make our living, and it's like losing a job.
Mr. Attorney, is it appropriate now, so I can make a motion?
No, absolutely. You can make a motion anytime you want to. The board can second it, you can discuss it, or I might second it, but certainly you can make a motion.
Laura, help me out now. My motion is to approve the special use permit for Mr. Bennett, North Florida Holsteins, main dairy, with the Grey John tract, South Pivot, and the, well, that's the main dairy we're going to change, and then the main dairy, when Mr. Bennett has expressed his consent for the county wishes that the county change it from A1 to A2, and whatever timeline that you come up with will abide by, or will put in my motion, and that part of the Piedmont tract, that's A5 on it. That's my motion.
Okay, I have a motion, my Commissioner John Thomas, to approve the part that's A1, the original, the great piece, and also the A5 that's located out in the Piedmont tract, but not the A6. And I have a second, my Commissioner Kenner Thomas. Any discussion at this time?
And just so you know, my timeframe for processing that amendment is that your transmittal hearing would be at your June 17 meeting, and-
Yeah, for the A1 to A2.
This is for the A1 to A2. And transmit that to the state. This is going to be under the expedited review process, which means that the state and the review agencies have 30 days to review and comment. After that 30 days expires, we can act on it. So, at your August 19 meeting, I would proceed bringing this back to you for approval, the A1 to A2.
Any other discussion? We have both been, Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Commissioner John Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Harrison.
Yes.
Commissioner Kenner Thomas.
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, motion carries. Let's take about a five minute break before we do the old business to do this.
You deserve a raise.
Don't worry, Mr. White, go on.
Actually, y'all are good.